Thanks for coming. Agenda review and disposition, is there anything to add?
Nothing to add or take away.
Okay, perfect. Minutes of September ninth, 2024, did you guys get a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there any questions, comments?
I did, Tanya, under principals' report, Stephanie, the first one, curriculum and assessment, do you have it in front of you? Just because it's kind of a enel thing.
Okay.
Stephanie asked about the variation in math proficiency. Principal Orlando noted the introduction of a new curriculum and that math development often happens at different times and is that what, is that how you explain that? I was kind of not sure, I was like.
I don't know exactly what I said in the moment, I think I did say something similar to that.
There's more variation.
Yeah, I think there's a little more variation.
Okay.
Abstract thinking does not happen quite as literally sequentially as you would think. It can happen in spits and spurts.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that that's what that meant, okay.
Someone want to, is there something else Fran?
The other thing I asked was, a question which maybe you were going to talk about with your updates. Under safety, it said that potentially in mid-October, we're going to set up something with the PD. I'm going to update you on that.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, cool, so someone like to make a motion to remove the minutes with those changes that Fran suggested?
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. Principals' report.
I printed my, the notes I take, I use to give my principals' report, to put them in front of you. I did want to note that our enrollment pre-K to eight is at three seventy-nine, but for K to eight is at three sixty-one, which is a little bit low, as you know, we've discussed at the last two meetings. In particular, in our younger grades, but you know, it's sporadic, as you can see in front of you. Pre-K is at eighteen, kindergarten is at twenty-six, first grade is at thirty-nine, second grade is forty-eight, third grade is thirty-three, fourth grade is thirty-five, fifth grade is forty-nine, sixth grade is forty-seven, seventh grade is thirty-seven, and eighth grade is forty-seven students. So you can see that there's great variation from grade to grade. So we.
Do you know from, I'm not sure how you would know, like, because I know there's kindergarten at like the Montessori school, I think there's a charter school at kindergarten, so do you anticipate the fall year that that?
So, we start to call and reach out to Head Start and the preschools and the pre-K programs after the new year. So, you know, as we move, I think we'll do that a little bit earlier this year, so. But it's a moving target.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to go through all of the fall field trips, other than to say, I listed them there for you in writing. I think one's part of the Plymouth Elementary School culture that's really remarkable is our field trips. Our kids get out, they're out in the woods and on the mountains all along, all through the years. So, I was lucky enough to go on the second grade field trip this year to up Rattlesnake and Holderness, and that was really fun. Wanted to let everyone know for upcoming events that October fifteenth is parent-teacher conference day. We are closed, parents are strongly encouraged to schedule a meeting. The link was sent via email and it is on our PES website. Or you can email teachers directly to set up meetings if you are less, have less familiarity with how to do that with the online link. Our Scholastic Book Fair is scheduled for October eleventh, the fifteenth, and the sixteenth. That over, that includes the day of parent-teacher conferences, so it will be open for parents and kids to visit during parent-teacher conference. And then our family literacy night is scheduled for October twenty-third from five to six. Sarah Thompson is organizing that event, it's a fun night of reading and writing activities. The PTA is providing pizza from six to six-thirty after the event, so please come and bring your students with you. It is not a parent-only event, it is a parent and child event, and it is for kindergarteners through third grade. Couple of student shout-outs, we wanted to congratulate Brielle Greenwood, Maria Cardenas, and Izzy Walker for winning the CARE Awards in third, fourth, and fifth grade, so congratulations to all of them. And shout-outs to some new staff, I would like to recognize Ursula Askins-Huber, who is our Spanish teacher. She has transitioned to elementary school from the high school, teaching, the land of teaching high school. She's teaching three hundred and sixty-five students with K eight within five days. That's a lot of kids to see in five days, so she's, she's working hard and doing a great job. Emily Hazleton, who is new to Plymouth Elementary School, got married in the month of September, she is now Emily Gove. I'd like to shout her, her out, she switched from small Wentworth Elementary School to Plymouth Elementary with all its bust hustle and bustle, and she's doing a fantastic job in the primary wing. And Chrissy Simmons stepped into jestics and shoes with such incredible grace and positivity in fourth grade. So, thank you to all of them. Under curriculum instruction and assessment, I have a slideshow, and you have in front of you a paper version of the slideshow. But it is a, and I'm going to wait for Jenny to get us up and going on the screen, there we go. So it is a picture, I believe it was last month that I presented to you about this New Hampshire SAS assessment. That is the statewide assessment tool. Within SAU forty-eight, we use now Ames Web as our district assessment tool, and I wanted to share this data with you. Obviously, we always want to look at more than one data point, New Hampshire SAS is one, Ames Web is another. How students are doing in the classroom is most important, right, okay? But it's important for us to look at this data too, so. Beep. I want you to sort of orient yourselves to what the data shows, N in the slides represents the number of students who took the test. The percentage is the percentage of the number of students who completed the same test, so what percentage. And then green, yellow, and red represent low risk, moderate risk, and high risk, okay? So, green is low risk and red is the highest risk. So then, this is the kindergarten information, so you'll see that there are a number of students, thirteen students are fifty-two percent who show to be at high risk for literacy. And what I want to caution you all with when you look at this is these are kiddos who, it's their first time in a public school, it's their first moment where probably they've ever seen a test like this, okay? And you can see they did a little better on the early numeracy test, okay? And it's really letter ID and number ID at that point is what we're asking them to do. And then beep. Here is the first grade data, okay? And you can see there are, this is a different group of kids, so it's important to not look, to understand as you look year to year that it's a different group of kids, right? So, it needs to be viewed at, at that one data point, okay? And then here's second grade, and what you see is that there are much more equality between the three tiers as the number of kids, but much less in the red, right? Many fewer kids, much smaller percentage of kids who are at high risk. And here's third grade, and again, you see even more green in both literacy and math. And there's fourth grade, and fifth grade.
That's awesome.
And sixth grade, and seventh grade, and eighth grade. And I, we, we wanted to, I wanted to show you very briefly just the progression through the years and a fall data point, right, okay? Because we don't want to just wait until the spring and see how kids are doing, we want to see how kids are doing in the fall, respond to that data with instruction and intervention, and then we'll look again in January and we'll see, is that what we're doing, working, and then we'll look again in the spring.
And is the test progressive?
It does get harder over time, yes. I think that's a challenge for students and teachers, the test does get harder through the, as the year progresses.
And so when you say this is the district, this is just PES, it's not other students?
It's all SAU.
This data is only Plymouth Elementary School.
Okay.
This is, this is just students who go to school there.
But we use the same assessment.
Yeah, I see. I, I, it's a very nice picture, and it really shows the impact of elementary school education.
This, you can look at data in lots of different ways, through different lenses. One thing that I think this really shows is the strength of our curriculum and instruction. You can see that we have well-researched, evidence-based curriculum and that our teachers are, you know, through the years, working hard to meet kids' needs, so. All right, I'm going to, also, just wanted to report out, we discussed at last month's meeting the desire to do, to have a community event about anxious generation, we held that event last week. We had about eighteen people in person and about eight people joined via Zoom. I thought it was very well-attended for a, for a no-food, no, no kid in attendance event. And there were some really important takeaways from that, which I have listed on the notes in front of you. I will say them out loud because I think it's important that the entire community hear them. There are some strong positives about technology, and I think people wanted to acknowledge that you can build community, a broader community and tech skills through technology use. That unstructured play is important for building autonomy, creativity, exploration, a sense of agency, conflict resolution, and problem-solving, and really an acknowledgement that we need to make sure that our kids have, have opportunities for unstructured play. That our straw, our small rural community has a unique opportunity to promote play and independence and trust in other adults, and to develop community connections. That it's important to be thoughtful about you and your child's virtual diet, e.g., are they watching YouTube, gaming, or on Snapchat, or are you watching a movie as a family or a sporting event as a family? Those are two, the value between those is very different. And to teach personal responsibility and accountability by example, so that, making sure that parents and adults are modeling that. Parents want training and support on parent controls, different apps, and family agreements, so we will be following up with other family nights this year to support them at home, learning more about those. And a request for a community event to share information and pledge the wait until eighth grade graduation for smartphones. Of course, that would be optional, that would not be a mandatory pledge, but those were some of the key takeaways. If, if anyone who is interested in learning more, they could email me and I have a short article based on the book Anxious Generation that really is informative and shorter in length to read, more, more accessible. Also wanted to let everyone know that our PTA is active again this year, and they meet the first Wednesday of the month, right here, six-thirty. So, they've already met for this month, but they will meet again in November. And if you're interested in getting those minutes or joining the PTA to call the front office, and we will help connect you to the PTA. And just a brief facilities update, the library is complete, it's beautiful. We now have all of our furniture and everything that we have asked for, so thank you very much. And the middle school swing set will go in this week, so the Gaga pit is there, but we are going to have a little swing set installed this week. And later in the agenda, we will review the capital improvement plan.
And Tanya, I just want to say thank you for having that community conversation. I was late coming to it because of work, so I apologize for that, but I was happy to be here for the short amount of time that I was able to come. I then had to, went to the high school school board meeting, and they were talking about the same exact thing. So I stood up at the high school school board meeting, I said, "Oh my God, so exciting, they're talking about that at elementary school, I hope that you can connect," so that everybody.
They started it, yes.
Yeah, so like everyone's, that's what I was told, so.
We started in the spring, we selected that as our summer read as an administrative team, so all of the elementary schools and the high school team have read it and are all kind of implementing different pieces of it in different ways, depending on the community's needs and wants, yeah.
I was grateful to see that the conversation just wasn't here, that it was there too, so. And I was like, "Please collaborate."
I think we, did we put in to get one of those books? Was it supposed to come here and get it or not?
Yes, I may have given it away though to some of the parents who. I have one more, I have one more copy, it's yours Fran.
I have some extra at the SAU.
Are you going to have more of those, Tanya, more community conversations?
We are, well, we're going to start with the parent training around parent controls, and I think we will either wrap that right into a pledge, or I'm not sure exactly how we'll do that, but we will have more, yes. But maybe on different topics.
Yeah, that's awesome, I thought it was really well-attended, I was impressed, so, yeah, thank you. All right, Kelly, what have you got?
So our fall teams are all doing really great, and we are in the home stretch, if you believe it or not, we have about three more weeks to go, last event taking place on October twenty-fourth. As somewhat of a highlight, I wanted to really thank all of the people who helped us run our one-home cross-country race that we held, which was last Thursday, October third. And we needed help because we had sixteen schools represented here and about a hundred and eighty-seven runners overall between the boys and the girls. So, Mother Nature helped us out, it was a beautiful day, and both teams did awesome. Our girls' and boys' teams both came in second place out of those sixteen teams. And some of our runners who finished in the top ten on the girls' side were Josie Hankins, who was third, and Elizabeth Sunderland was ten, and then Caleb Tealbar took first place overall. And boy, that boy can cruise because he finished like a minute ahead of the next runner. So, but the entire team did a great job, and I really appreciate everybody's help and work on that, it was a good day. We had our fall team photos taken, DC Sports Photography, hopefully we should be seeing those coming in soon, so any parents that are looking for those packets, they should be on the way. And I hate to say the word right now because I'm not ready, but winter sports will be coming along soon. We are going to hold those sign-ups the last week of October during the lunch periods in the cafeteria, so that all of those.
What will they be?
Our, our winter sports, so we have fifth and sixth grade, ba, boys' and girls' basketball, seventh and eighth grade, boys' and girls' basketball, wrestling, and Nordic ski.
I was a trigger, I think.
Yep. And so grades five through eight, we'll be able to sign up for those in the cafeteria, and as soon as we get more of that winter information, kind of finalizing some schedules and talking with potential coaches and getting that all organized, so that'll all be posted in the near future. In terms of safety, we have our next safety committee meeting this Wednesday, October ninth. As of today, PES has held three fire drills back on September fifth and twenty-fourth and October first. We held our first bus evacuation drill, that was on September twenty-seventh. And thank you to our safety committee helpers, Deb McManus, John Randi, Kim King, Scott Southwood, Lori Clary, and Officer Bonin for their assistance in making that drill run smoothly as always. PES will be holding an off-site evacuation drill this month. Essentially, that is, gives our faculty and students an opportunity to practice evacuating this building, but then if we ever needed to, to move to our other evacuation site, which one of them is, is the high school, the other one is Plymouth State University. So we will practice that this month, more information coming on that. And then there will be a parent-only night on October sixteenth, six p.m. right here in the library for civilian response to active shooter training, and that will be offers by Plymouth PD, and Officer Diamond will be the instructor for that this evening. I know that information went out last Friday through our newsletter, thank you Jenny Lee, and she set up a Google signup sheet for parents to sign up who would like to attend. We are looking forward, hoping for at least a minimum of ten people to hold the event. Obviously, more than ten is certainly welcome, and we're hoping that we will get that, so.
So, what's up? Awesome, thank you very much. Do you guys have any further questions for Tanya or Kelly?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, perfect, thank you, thanks for those updates. Privilege of the floor number one. All right, moving on, discussion items, the Title One Family and Community Engagement Policy, the second reading.
Cleaned that policy up quite a bit from the last policy and informed the New Hampshire School Board's Association of some of the wording, so it is updated to reflect a more polished version of that policy. Again, this is required as part of Title One and the audit that is going on with Title One right now as well.
So, the only question that I had was about the bullet number five with conduct with the involvement of families, evaluation of the family contact, so include any barriers identified, authorized by law, particularly by parents who are economically disadvantaged, have disabilities, have limited English proficiency, have limited literacy, or are any racial or ethnic minority background. So, for me, I don't, I mean, everybody should be, have the right to get Title One, regardless of what your.
Right, so we help parents fill out paperwork, we help them get pre-introduced applications if they need help with that. If, if English proficiency is an issue, we will work with them to get the necessary paperwork completed so they can access. That's not a barrier, basically what that's saying is that we offer, it is equal to all students.
Okay.
But how do you do an annual evaluation of that?
You just do a narrative as far as what you've offered in literacy nights, and you know, what you've had as far as events for Title One, what services you offer, what parent outreach you do, there's actually a ton of parent outreach that is now required for Title One school-wide schools.
Notifications of assessment screeners.
Stuff on your website that's required, so it's, it's all of that.
Okay.
Any budgetary changes that we can expect if we adopt this policy?
None. No. Good question.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the policy as written?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wish, I wish the state would ask that question, would they give us new laws? Any budgetary decisions, yes. Sorry.
This is the Title One Family and Community Engagement, we were given a lot of other policies too, are we adopting those?
We're tabling those for now.
All right, let's move on to the capital improvement plan.
Does everybody have the long piece of paper in front of them?
Yes.
So this is just your updated ten-year plan. So we do like to either take anything off that was on there before, you completed many summer projects last year, we got a lot done with our ESR funds as well. So you'll see in the column for next year, twenty-five, twenty-six, you have as priorities, the exterior door hardware, the science room, VRF, and then the gym exterior doors as the main projects. And just for your awareness, you have, in your retained fund balance, you have three hundred and nineteen thousand, eight thirty-nine. And then in your capital reserve fund, at the end of this year, you'll have a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seventy sixty-six because we withdrew some of that for current projects. So, given the list that we have right here, if, this will have no budgetary impact if you want to use your retained fund balance or what's in the capital reserve, just put that on a warrant article. So, these are the big projects, you've taken care of a ton. What I do want to point out is that, you know, it's not required, but it's definitely something the board has been looking at for a while, is shifting, is looking at bathroom remodel and locker room remodel. The bathroom remodel is, is a big expense of about six hundred and forty-eight thousand, so it's split among two years if you wanted to do that. It's definitely not required, but it's something that many schools are shifting to and has, we've done it at the high school, it really has cut down on behavior as well, as far as kids jumping in there at the single stall has really helped with that, that piece.
Maybe did one in the school, in the middle school, where?
No, we haven't done any yet, we cut.
We talked about it.
So it's just still there, you can push it out, you can, it's not something that has to be done right now, but it's just something to consider as we move forward, especially the locker rooms are pretty dated as well, so you can shift that piece. With both those projects comes a design cost as well, so just something to think about. But those can be the next couple of years or not. The next big project, while the locker room remodel is big, that's, that would be a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project at least. And then lastly, if you look about to twenty-thirty, thirty-one, you'll see that HVAC and controls, about a million, a little over a million as far as to, to just update that piece. And, and you did a lot of it with this ESR money. Who knows, maybe by then we'll get some, some other, other ways to do it, but that's it as far as major projects that you have going on. The school's in great shape, you've done a lot of work in the past several years, you have money saved up in the capital reserve, you have a retained fund balance, so I'm pretty confident you can move forward with the projects you need to get done without having any impact in the operating budget. You have some alternates, okay? So that's just for you, it's, it's, it's always changing, you know, as far, there's a lot of flexibility to this document, but just so you're aware, what's out on the horizon as far as what needs to be completed.
Tanya, do you find that there is a lot of behavior issues in the bathrooms? Just out of curiosity, in the, in the middle school?
I would say yes. I would say, but I think it's intermediate in middle school.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, there's no supervision, it's a place you get to hang out with your friends, it's a place where kids are kids.
Be class avoidance, that could be.
Class avoidance, I think, I also hear the kids don't use the bathroom because it's a pub, because it's a multi-stall bathroom. That one of the big, I mean, I, I think there's privacy, comfort, you know, I mean, I prefer the single-stall bathroom, you know, I think it's, it's a very natural thing. So I do think, long-term, it's something to think about, and with the locker rooms and changing, and that that space as well. I think it's what, you know, our community can, you know, I did not think it was appropriate for us to have that on our, on this planet at this point with where we sit as a town, but I do think it's something that we should be thinking about for, for kids. And I, and I, you know, I think the challenge is, it's not one set of bathrooms, it's the intermediate bathrooms, it's the middle school bathrooms, it's actually the public bathrooms down at the end of the hallway near the park and rec, and it's the locker room, so it's actually a fair number of spaces. I would leave the primary wing. At this point, I think it's more about the comfort for the older kids that I would be thinking about, so.
And are these numbers excluding the primary wing?
Includes all of it, it's a two-part project.
It's a two-part project, I think the first part would actually be the design work, and then we would need to get actual quotes. I mean, this is, these are not.
I thought we did that.
We have it, we, we had tabled doing the design work to finish the gymnasium and finish the library. We ha, we can do the design work to get better numbers, we could actually do that this year.
You can do that with, with, with your funds for this year too.
Right.
So.
All right, lots to think about.
Yeah, but it's just kind of, as we get to the budget next month, you won't want to think about all the, all of it at once.
Yeah, it comes in phases.
Yeah.
The only other thing that I think is worth noting is, you know, we, the parking lot is out there at some point to be done, and, and the HVAC in the wings, you know, whether or not, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens there with.
It's a big project to do all at once.
Yeah, we would need to not do it all at once and do stages.
That's what I wonder, if you can bring that project up.
Yeah, because you just, there's nothing really in, well, there's only fifty-seven thousand.
And you see, you see where you're at sometimes at the end of the year, like, are you hit with some major students that require, you know, additional services that you got to hold on, you know? There's just so many unpredictable pieces at this point that. You know, there's just so many unpredictable pieces at this point that.
But it's helpful to have this information, so thank you very much. All right, budget priorities.
So this is a question for all of you. Tanya and myself and all of us will be working on the first draft of the budget. Plymouth's enrollment is down more than any of my schools at this point as far, so it's down about thirty on the October one count if you look just kind of at that ten thousand foot view. And I go, given, you know, the town and what, what big projects are coming up or, you know, what do you want to see from us in that first draft? I mean, are you looking for anything specifically as far as any priorities that you would like us to focus on? We focus typically on the needs, but I think it's important to just get a message from you to keep, you know?
Yeah.
As far as what, what you're hearing or it just, it just gives us some guidance, some direction.
Yeah, so I am always trying, because I work for both the town and for the school district, I see both sides. So for me, you know, it's, this is what my town budget is, this is what the school budget is. So it's, I have a different perspective than everybody else, I think. I think it's important to try to keep the budget down as much as we can. I mean, I think some hard decisions are gonna have to be made, especially with our numbers being so low. You never want to talk about cutting a teacher position, but the reality is that that might have to happen. And I know that's a hard conversation, but I think it's important one to have. I think it's important to make sure that the school has everything that they need to operate, to, to serve the needs of the kids that are here. So I think that's important for me personally. Just making sure that the teachers and the staff have the resources that they need to do the job that they best that they can, which I think they do every year. I mean, it's, I'm not saying that they don't, I just think it's important to really look like, okay, I need, if I'm a teacher for example, and I'm asking for a thousand dollars of school supplies. You know, really taking a look at the hard numbers and saying, okay, well, I want a thousand dollars of school supplies, but can I get by with five hundred dollars worth of school supplies? Things like that, you know, just little things like that is important. What, what do you really need to make your classroom and make the school work? That's, and I know that's a priority for the town too, is what you want and what you need.
I know that health insurance rates will come in within the next week or two, so we'll have those numbers. The other cost that I, that will go up is your transportation costs. We did it, our, we, we did requests for proposals around that. We originally had four or five companies come to the initial meeting, then they see our area. We had two submit proposals, one significantly more than the other. The, the current transportation company was the low number, but higher than we're used to.
Yeah.
So that's just something that, that.
And we have the impact on the salary raises that we have for our teachers and.
Yeah, all that, all of that will be in there, you're not negotiating any contracts this year. So you don't have additional contracts there, it just will be the budget and anything you want for building and capital pieces.
Those are both increasing based on the contracts.
You'll see that reflected.
But that will reflect.
In the budget, which, which might have the budget go up.
Right.
Just naturally based on that.
Yeah.
So those are, those are gonna be the big impacts right there. But there's nothing else, there's no other big projects.
Right, and if we're keeping ahead of the facilities, and I think we were lucky to have that, those praise money's to be able to do that, so.
Is there anything from the town's end, do they have any huge projects going on as far as?
I don't know the answer to that, I only have built my budget and they have started having department head budget hearings this week. So.
Okay, so very preliminary.
Nothing that I know of specifically.
Any direction from anyone else on the board?
I think this is why, this is our, one of our primary roles to, to figure this out and we have to balance the, the needs of the school against the ability of the town to, to fund it. So I look forward to seeing the numbers and having that conversation.
Very good.
I wonder too, somewhat with our numbers being down, is that because housing's so unaffordable right in Plymouth?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
There's lots of different, but I think it's important to, you know, bring us your budget in the first draft like we do. And I always, just like I do with my town, is I look at every line and I ask the questions. What's this for, where's this going, what's this for? And I think it's important to ask those questions so that you have the knowledge. Because if you don't have the knowledge, then, you know.
We'll try to present all of that for you, so you don't have any questions.
I will always have questions, but I think it's just important to keep it down.
Yeah, very good.
All right, is there any other business?
No other business.
Okay. Well, did you have the floor number two?
Is your funding tied directly to your enrollment from the town? Or is it based on the budget you submit in support of that?
So it's two separate, so the town has its own budget and the school has its own, and its own budget. And part of the tax rate is based on the school budget specifically, yeah.
We do get adequacy money based on enrollment.
But it's, that's a small, that is a small.
Of the formula.
And I think the other thing too, that's important is to look for grant opportunities. I think there's lots of opportunities out there for grants. I know it takes a lot of work to look for grants because it is, there's a lot that goes into it. But I feel like there's potential there for monies for grants.
And I would say we are pretty lucky, Pam Martin, Assistant Superintendent at the SAU does a phenomenal job. And she and I talk at le, at least once a week around what, what grants are out there, what can we fund with it? Does it fit, what do we need to do to make it fit, you know?
You got a lot of teacher professional development, kid, kid activities.
Yeah.
And positions, I mean, the student assistance counselors coming out of a grant. Some of your general positions are supplemented through grant funds as well, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. Did everybody sign the manifest? Couldn't think of what the word was. All right, perfect. And is there any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay, perfect, so we just need a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
Second.
All in favor, go on into non-public.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for coming to the meeting.